Good morning. It's nine AM. And I would like to call San Diego County Planning Mission Meeting of August twenty-third, twenty-twenty-three to order. Please rise and join me for Pledge of Allegiance. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic, which stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Thank you. Please be seated. Mercedes, could we have the road call, please?
Commissioner Hanson? Commissioner Ketchum?
Here.
Commissioner Sharona Quan?
Here.
Commissioner Ramirez?
Here.
Chair Gupta?
Here. Next, we have the public comment at this time. A public could address the commission on any matter that's not on today's agenda. Do we have any speakers? Mercedes? In that case, we'll close the public comments and move on to consent agenda. We have three items on consent agenda. We do not have any minutes at this time, so item one is is not there.
And I request item two to be taken off of the consent agenda.
Okay. And how about item three?
That's it, the discretion of the commission.
Okay. Okay. So in that case, shall we vote on the one for not? Since we do not have the
That's right, we'll have to postpone the minutes and since the other two items will be pulled off of consent, we are now on the regular agenda and we can start with the second consent item.
Okay. So do you, do we want to have the presentation on second?
I have a question and maybe we just asked the question. I am being asked if it conforms to the general plan, but I do not know what I'm asking to approve other than purchase the three properties and I don't know was was the intended near-term use or long-term use. And I just wish know what it is, see if it conforms to the general plan.
I'm happy to try and address that question. The properties that are the subject of this general plan conformity constitute the entire frontage of a block on Middlefield Road. They recently came up for sale. The county's executive office and working with the real property division saw a great opportunity here to acquire property for a public purpose that will serve the neighborhood. That public serving use has not been identified yet. However, the county is committed for using those properties, committed to using those properties in a way that will serve the public and the community. So the best I can tell you at this point in time, it is intended to be a public serving use that serves the neighborhood in a beneficial manner.
So it could be used from anything from a public park to a bus stop to a community library to anything.
That's correct.
And we got to this point because it was just such a buy that we'd be an opportunity to miss it or?
That's correct. It was an opportunity to acquire property that we thought could be a very beneficial component to serving the neighborhood.
I'm just hard dug getting my head around. You know, because the county doesn't go out just to buy property, you know, otherwise there's opportunities everywhere and
Well, I'll let the council chime in, but and I understand Commissioner Ramirez wants to speak.
Yeah, can I? So I'm very familiar, obviously, with the area because that's the area that I represent. I'm certainly hoping that one of those uses could be actually for parking, although we have parking very close by that the county has already acquired. But the reality is that with the redesign of Middlefield, we've lost thirty percent of parking on Middlefield itself. So we need to be able to add more parking. I'm not saying that this particular should be for parking, but I can understand that the opportunities to acquire land by the county on Middlefield are very few and far in between. So as I look at it, this like that's true, we haven't determined what it can be for, but at least if we can acquire and hold it until we figure it out. I would say if we don't like it, we can always ask the county to put it back on the market and sell it. If we don't like what it would be used for. But I would probably argue more for the acquisition by the county because we may lose that opportunity for a long time until we are able to to get something again.
So there is some concept of what might use, even though it may not fulfill it.
Correct.
Okay.
Yeah.
That helps me.
And I'd also note that the planner that processed the general plan conformity is available by Zoom and would like to make a few comments with regard to the acquisition if the commission is willing.
Yeah. Let me see if commissioners have any other questions. Commissioner Sharona Quan? So does county do this from time to time? That's my question.
The ordinary manner in which the county acquires real estate is that it identifies a need and seeks for properties that are appropriate to fulfill that need. Sometimes that takes the form of contacting property owners who are all in a certain category of ownership. That's what the county did with regard to the Home Key projects. They sent a letter to the owners of hotels throughout the county and asked whether or not any were willing to sell. But that's again unusual. Ordinarily, when we have a need for a property, we have a need for a specific property, say it's a parcel where we want to put a road or some other thing that has to be in that location. So this is not ordinary for the manner in which the county acquires real estate. And no, it's it's not the case that the county is just looking for opportunities to buy property. The the unique situation of the North Arrows neighborhood is that it is underserved by a number of public functions and there's a great need. We knew there was a great need throughout the neighborhood, but we didn't identify this parcel as being the perfect place to locate a particular thing. As Commissioner Ramirez put it, it was that the opportunity presented itself and we knew that there was a need on Middlefield. So it was because the property was voluntarily listed for sale. That's really the reason why.
And and how is it funded? Like, where does the funding come from?
I believe this acquisition is with general fund money. There's not specific grant money in play.
Okay. So I would like to hear what the person that's on standby?
Yes, our planner, Chanda Singh, is available to present to the commission.
Okay. Yes, we'd like to hear that.
Oh, is it Katie?
Hi, Katie, if you can please unmute.
Hello, hello commissioners. Yes, thank you. I'll just make some brief comments and say that this these properties are have the land use designation of neighborhood mixed use. And that designation allows for a range of different uses. It allows for a medium density mix of locally oriented uses, including commercial, residential and public uses to serve the daily needs of both residents and visitors to the area. So from what we know about what Real Property Services is interested in, you know, acquiring these properties for that would generally meet the land use designation uses identified in the general plan. So I think that's also a potential reason why you could find that this acquisition conforms to the general plan. And I'm available for any other questions as needed.
Thank you, Katie.
Any questions?
No further questions.
Thank you. Thank you so much, Katie. So do we
I think we should open the public comment.
Yeah.
If any.
Okay, do we have any? Any public comment? We have no speakers. Okay. So in that case, we'll close the public comments and so so do we go on to the item three or?
I think we need to vote on this one now. Yeah.
Okay.
I also move define and determine that pursuant to California Government Code Section sixty-five four oh two and the county of San Mateo proposes the purchase of three thousand nine and three thousand seventeen Middlefield Road. And sixty dash fifty-three dash one hundred and four oh one Second Avenue conforms to the county general plan.
I second that.
Our roll call, please.
Commissioner Hanson?
Aye.
Commissioner Ketchum?
Aye.
Commissioner Sharona Quan?
Aye.
Commissioner Ramirez?
Aye.
Chair Gupta?
Aye.
Motion passes.
So now we move on to item three. So the item three, we have requests for the continuance on this.
No, the item three has been pulled from consent and so should be heard as a regular item. Let's see, perhaps.
I guess maybe I could have worded that more efficiently. I I wanted to discuss whether it should be continued. I thought it needed to be pulled from consent to make that decision.
I don't know that it needed to be pulled from consent, but let's talk about that. So the problem with the continuance of the general plan conformity is the statute requires that the commission take action with a time within a timeframe that would not accommodate a continuance. So if the commission is does not act within the prescribed timeframe, then in essence, it's the project is deemed to be in conformity. So I think the appropriate course of action today would be for the commission to consider it as a regular item and to deliberate on whether or not you believe it's in conformity with the general plan.
So do we have the planners?
Shonda, please unmute.
Good morning, commission. Can you hear me?
We can hear you.
Okay, great. And so I did not prepare a formal presentation, but I'm here to answer any questions that you might have. As stated in the proposal, the county property, the real property division is requesting a determination whether a vacation of a an area, a public right of way easement next to one oh six Los Banos Avenue, which is a single-family home conforms to the county general plan. And as stated in the the staff report, per the general plan analysis, our staff recommendation is that it does conform to the general plan based on, you know, specifically looking at the policies related to vacation. I'm so happy to answer any question or clarify sections of the staff report as needed.
Do you have questions?
Yes, I bring this up because of the Montero Water and Sanitary has the water and sewer lines in this area and they were not notified of this until they didn't learn about this until just the other day and haven't had time to. Their concern is that the easement that supposedly will be provided so that they can keep their infrastructure in this in this area, they feel that doesn't protect them from the construction or whatever that will happen. So what kind of assurance or how does this work?
You know, I don't quite understand M W S D's position, why an easement would not be adequate to enable them to perform the maintenance work that they need to perform. Certainly, we will coordinate with them with regard to any construction project that will occur on the site, which is not the subject of the general plan conformity. Clearly, the general plan conformity is intended to allow for future construction of a retaining wall, but certainly prior to the you know, the issuance of a building permit for such a retaining wall, we would coordinate with M W S D to make sure any concerns they have about impacts on utilities is adequately addressed during the construction project.
Priority? I mean, would they be required to move their infrastructure to accommodate the wall or would the wall have to accommodate where the infrastructure currently is?
It's a good question. I'll defer to council on this.
The the purpose of having maps that specify where roads and easements are is so that when you place your stuff there, you kind of conclusively have the right to keep it there. The difficulty that we sometimes encounter, particularly on the coast side, is that there's the map and then there's the physical reality of the road alignment, which is not often perfectly within the boundaries. I I think in this particular instance, when we took a look at it, I don't think we were aware of any utilities that would need to be relocated. I think what you're hearing from Montero is that they don't feel the same assurance that that's the case. I think probably on these facts, I think I might take the unusual step of advising that you that you not take action on the general plan conformity today. The the way the code reads about the forty-day deadline in which to make these findings is is definitely directory. So I'm not advising you not to make the decision within the forty days, but there may be some wiggle room about whether or not you, as the legislative body, can specify a longer period of time in which to make your determination. And given the 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 position taken by M W S D, it might be better to hear from them about whatever they identify as being, if there's anything that's in the alignment that would not be able to be retained. So I think that's a long way of saying, I think maybe in this instance, a continuance is the appropriate thing to do.
To continue the item?
Yes, but I would say that because the code says that you're supposed to make the decision within forty days or such longer period of time is maybe designated by the legislative body, that you ask that the decision be brought back to you at the next meeting so that there isn't too much time that passes.
Can I make that motion? I move that we continue the item to our next meeting.
Do, since we opened it, do we have to open for public? Yeah.
The question I had is that the motion that we have in front of us is does not include any plans for the wall, right? We are just saying or approve would be approving the vacation of that lot. Is that correct?
Sort of. The role of the planning commission with general plan conformities is to identify whether or not what the county proposes to do, not what the private property owner proposes to do, but what the county proposes to do is consistent or not with the general plan. So you're not really approving what's being done. You're simply deciding whether or not it would violate the general plan to do so. And for reasons may not be worth getting into, sometimes the project goes forward, even if you make a finding that it does violate the general plan. So I just want to be very careful to say that it's not really an approval or a disapproval. The the code section actually talks about reporting. Reporting whether or not the proposed action is consistent or in conformity with the general plan. And you're correct that the only question is whether or not vacating the public's right to travel on the road is consistent with the general plan, not whether or not construction of a retaining wall, which would be subject to permit requirements when proposed. That's not before the commission today.
Thank you. Thank you, Steve, for explaining that.
Would the, please? Would the retaining wall require a CDP?
I'm running through my head whether or not it might qualify for coastal development permit exemption in terms of an improvement to existing single-family residence. It's very proximate to the coastal bluff and as the commissioners might know, there's limitations on the issuance of exemptions based on how far away project is from the bluff. So I would need to undertake further analysis to make that determination. And if it's continued, I'll be prepared to answer that at the next hearing.
So we need to open it to the public here? So do we have any?
We do have one speaker.
Please go ahead.
We will start with Camus Steinmetz. Cam, please unmute.
Good morning, commissioners. My name is Camus Steinmetz. I am a land use attorney for the applicant, Lyman. And I would just like to to remind the commissioner, point out that this request for vacation of the easement is subject to reservation of the county's easement in all of the existing public utilities. That would include the Montero water pipeline, if there is one, the water line. And so that this is really just a determination as to whether the request for the vacation of the road right of way is consistent with the general plan. And as the staff report points out, that road was closed back in two thousand nine, I believe, due to a landslide. It's not travelable. So so any existing easements would be preserved by the county and the reservation that would be approved by the board of supervisors. And I believe the contract planner that is working on this is going through that process of determining where exactly those easements would be. And that would be reserved in the final vacation by the board of supervisors.
Thank you. Our next speaker is Harrison Heil. Harrison, please unmute. You have five minutes.
Hi, this is Harrison Heil. And I'm the real property agent for the representing the county of San Mateo Real Property Division. And yes, the way that we would handle this road vacation is that we would reserve an easement for any in-place and in-use public utility facilities. So the Streets and Highways Code requires the county to reach out to the public utility companies that operate in the area and to determine if there are any in-place and in-use public utility facilities. And then if we determine that there are any in-place, in-use public utility facilities, then what we would do is we would vacate the road right away, but we would reserve easements for any in-place and in-use public utility facility so that the public utility facilities are not impacted, they're not affected. They they have the 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 right to leave their public utility facilities within the area that they currently occupy. They sort of have they they have dibs, you could say, on that area. They they're existing there. And so we don't want to do anything to disrupt their operations. They'll have the rights maintained to 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 remain in place with their existing facilities and also to go in and and, you know, maintain them, operate them, et cetera, in perpetuity. So the reason that we took this item to the planning commission first, rather than contacting the utility companies first, is that we had the understanding that the that the the question before the planning commission is whether this road vacation is in conformity with the general plan and that the issue of the public utilities was really moot with regard to that question because these easements would be reserved and any utility companies out there would be protected. So you have some PG&E facilities out there. We did see the the Montero Water and Sewer Districts appears to have some improvements out there. So we're aware that there are some public utility facilities out there that we need to protect and we were fully planning on doing that. Now, with regard to the the retaining wall and the owner's improvements, that's outside of the purview of the real property division. And and I I believe more in the arena of the planning departments area of responsibility. And so we were expecting, and and I don't know to what extent, other county departments might also take a look at that. But it was Real Properties understanding that they that the that other county departments would be looking at the owner's improvements that they're planning and 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 making sure that that they're A-OK. And and so the any improvements, if there's this easement that is reserved for in-place, in-use public utilities, presumably the you that the the owner's improvements would not affect those. Now, because so so I guess I was thinking that the two of these plans would look at any in-place, in-use facilities and 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 make sure that these improvements would not conflict or or affect those.
Thank you. Thank you, Mr. Harry.
We do not have any more speakers on Zoom?
Anybody?
We have no speakers in chambers.
So in that case, I've closed the public hearing. Did you have any response to the?
Well, I would just follow up on the comment from the representative from Real Property Division in with regard to the construction of the retaining wall in the future. Although I don't know whether it will trigger a coastal permit, I do know that it would trigger a building permit. And that building permit application would be referred to all the relevant agencies and we would certainly take their comments into consideration before issuing any authorization to construct something. And as Real Property said, ensuring the ability of the utility providers to continue to provide service would take priority over the allowance of a private development.
Thank you, Steve.
Thank you, Steve.
So, uh, that said, and then referring to the earlier conversation and uh, Mr. Fox, as far as the county, I mean, is there assurance now, legal assurance that yes, indeed water and sand, the utilities will be protected to maintain their infrastructure in perpetuity?
I, I believe the, the further process that the Real Property Division undertakes by bringing the street vacation to the board of supervisors for approval includes a provision for assuring the protection of MWSD's existing resources.
Okay, thank you. So for purposes of our discussion here, I'd like to withdraw my previous motion and just get a, you know, where do we stand here with this now?
If I can ask a question here. If I read their letter, they're worried about knowing future impacts. Let's say the, we keep the road and the county made a whole different direction and said, we're gonna make it a viable road. Now, we know what the area really is like, but let's say, let's go the other direction. If we made it viable, they're gonna have severe impacts anyway. I mean, that area is where it's falling away, right? We, we would have to chop through uh, put uh, concrete everywhere, rebar everywhere. There's gonna be impact to them if we really wanted to make a road through there. So whether we do nothing, do something, there's still gonna be impacts and they're just, we just don't know what they are at this point. Is, I mean, it really? There, there's no way to avoid impacts.
Well, certainly, nature will take its course and will present impacts that need to be dealt with. Um, I think in light of the natural hazards at, in that location is highly unlikely that um, there would be improvements within that public right of way other than what's necessary to try and maintain utility service and
Yeah.
Um, so I think by, in recognition of that um, relinquishing the right of way to enable the property owner to protect their property um, doesn't in any way um, impede a project that the county is intending to undertake.
I mean, basically what the county is doing is trying to minimize impacts, not only to the community, but to the utility.
That's correct.
Okay.
I, I guess I um, struggle with the contrast where for example, talk of improvements at Carlos's Sixteenth Street, which would require Montero Sanitary moving their sewer line, presumably at their expense. Whereas in this case, it would seem more fair that somebody wanting to build a retaining wall so they can get in their driveway that um, they should, the wall should you know, that Montero Sanitary should have no cost in that matter. And I just, that's the thing I just wanted to assure is that legally, you could want to assume that that would be the legal case there?
Uh, for the most part, yes, I think it's safe to assume that because an easement right is superior to the right of the fee owner. And then when we, as the county, abandon the road right of way, all we're doing is saying that the right of travel across the top goes away. But the easement rights are still burdening the, the fee owner and they have to, they, they can't exercise their rights to utilize the fee in a way that injures the easement rights. So it may be the subject of negotiation if there's a project that involves construction to ensure the protection of the existing resources. Maybe there'll be an agreement between the owner and MWSD about replacing some pipes while they've got the ground opened up. Uh, you know, I don't know exactly what it's gonna look like, but MWSD has the right to keep its stuff there. And that isn't being changed uh, by the action that's proposed by the county.
So basically, that, that would be triggered at a point where if there's a project that they need to pull out plans, and then it would have to be uh, negotiated or somehow arranged to make sure that the that MWSD uh, is aware of whatever needs to happen there if they need to move.
That, that's correct. A standard um, process in our permit application review is to look at the location of the proposed development in relationship to property lines and easements. And as Mr. Fox said, the um, easement holders' rights would supersede that of the property owner. So we would make sure through the, the permit review process that those easement rights are respected.
All right, thank you.
When these easement agreements are put in place, aren't these sort of perpetual anymore?
That's true.
Yes, but um, easement documents that are recorded as between property owners are one thing. We're operating in a realm of public utility easements and road rights of way that are actually generated either through uh, a legal process like the recording of a subdivision map or, or some other legal process. They still are easements, they still are property interests. It's just that the way they come into existence and the way they go away is a little bit different from if there's a recorded document on the property um, with an easement agreement. Um, but the areas of law are very similar and the rights of the holders of those easements are very similar. It's just that we, we, we administer them as a county a little bit differently than a private property owner does with regard to, uh, say, a driveway access easement.
So have you ready to make a motion?
Does that mean?
Yeah. Um, yeah, uh, actually, I'll, I'll make the motion right now and see. All right. I uh, move that uh, that uh, find and that, and determine that they are uh, the prosification of the right of way easement adjacent to the one oh six Las Banas Avenue. Uh, as per um, uh, let me see, APN zero thirty seven dash two five five dash two nine zero. As shown on the map in attachment C, con- conforms to the general plant policy twelve point twenty three and consistent with all the other policies on the county general plan.
Second.
I'll second.
Roll call Mercedes.
Commissioner Hanson?
Aye.
Commissioner Ketchum?
Aye.
Commissioner Serano Quan?
Aye.
Commissioner Ramirez?
Aye.
Chair Gupta?
Aye.
Motion passes.
Hey, so we move on to our next item, which is item four. Uh, Mercedes, would you please read that into the record?
Item number four, the owner is Joshua Skolnick. The applicant is Carrie Burke. File number is PLN two zero two two dash zero zero two one one. The location is west side of Carrillo Highway, Pascadero.
Uh, okay, um, good morning, Commissioners. Um, the project that you have before you is a um, back here. Is a coastal development permit, uh, a planned agricultural development permit and architectural review. And this is to um, drill uh, a test well on the other side. So they would be drilling up to three test wells. Um, to see uh, how much water is on the site that could serve future development. Um, let's, let's go to the uh, there we go. Are you doing that? Delay a little bit, sorry. There we go. So a- as we um, saw in the description, this is uh, located south of um, Bean Hollow, Verlud, uh, that old reservoir in the community of Pascadero on the coast. Here are the three parcels that are involved in scenario view, uh, approximately six acres. Uh, and then this is a overview of the um, the study area. And there are uh, some prime agricultural um, of prime lands uh, on this parcel. There are also um, some, you can see um, some biologically significant areas uh, on the coast. Uh, some marshlands and coastal bluff scrub, as documented in the um, the bio report. So these are the, the different areas that the site maintains. Uh, so this is a uh, site plan that shows you exactly where the um, the wells are going to be located. Um, you can see the um, per the, the biological um, site visit. There was um, some some significant plants that were found on site. Um, the Harlequin's Lotus and Popcorn Flower uh, were discovered on site. And uh, per the LCP, the project um, created a fifty foot buffer from those plants. Um, so that it won't be impacted uh, with the drilling of the test wells. Um, so you can see all three uh, that will, that will be authorized with this CDP. Um, if one is viable, they will um, create a well using one of those um, one of those sites. So as detailed in the staff report, um, the project conforms with all applicable general plan, LCP uh, NPAD development criteria, um, or sufficient wildlife sort of resources, visual quality. Um, the, the, the well itself will only be approximately four square feet. Um, and it's, it's loaded the ground, so it won't uh, impact any visual resources. And due to the size, um, the, it won't uh, convert a significant amount of farm land, uh, uh, prime soils. Uh, so the project, well, the only uh, reason for the project is to determine if there's adequate wire support feature um, development on the property. It doesn't uh, involve the removal of uh, any large loss of vegetation or the words, uh, trees on the site. Um, and uh, and there was an extensive biological report that uh, was done on the on site to ensure that no special status, a plant or animal species or their habitats would be impacted um, during the construction of these wells. Um, hey, um, so so uh, a, for the environmental evaluation, an initial study um, was uh, prepared uh, for this project. It was circulated um, April twenty sixth um, twenty twenty three and no comments were received during the twenty day public comment period. Um, so with the mitigation measures that uh, are in the um, mi- mitigated negative declaration, um, staff has determined that there will be, I don't know, significant impacts on, on the environment or on this, for uh, for this project. Recommendations, um, the, the project was considered by the Ag Advisory Committee. And uh, no concerns or additional recommendations were raised during the hearing and it voted unanimously unanimously to uh, uh, recommend approval of the uh, project. Um, and staff recommends that the planning commission adopt the mitigated negative declaration and approve the coastal development permit, planned agricultural district permit and art review. Um, as according to the uh, findings in addition to the ones attached to the A, the staff report. That concludes my presentation. Any, any questions?
Thank you. Questions? Commissioner Ketchum?
I just had a question on the, on the um, site survey, it, of the site map, it shows a ten foot water line easement along the highway frontage. Uh, does that actually have a water line in it? Do we know and who's, who's belonged to?
A water line? I carry the applicant.
Let's, let's see if we have, right, we, we'll wait on the applicant. Any other question for? Questions? Okay, um, uh, on, on one of the drawings, I saw there was a existing well. Uh, it was showing there was a existing well already on the property. Is it, is that, uh, did I?
On which, which drawing?
Uh, this one, yeah.
This one, um, there are just the, the three test wells that are proposed.
Um, if you look way on the right side, uh, near the right border, you see, it says existing well.
That's correct. Uh, directly above that first one where the cursor is, there's um, an existing well. And I think we'll ask the applicant to address that when uh, their turn comes us to the mic.
All right. Okay, what was my other question? And also in the drawings, it showed kind of three parcels, are they merged already?
Uh, no, so these are, uh, well, they, they are effectively um, I believe they're effectively one parcel. Um, they are just three separate parcels for, uh, they're three separate APNs, but um, the parcel is effectively one parcel.
Okay, okay, all right. Okay, so if there are no more questions for the, for the planet, then uh, uh, we'll have the applicant speak. You have fifteen minutes if you'd like to. If you have any presentation?
Good morning, Chairman Gupta, members of the commission, staff and public. I'm Carrie Burke, the applicant, and it's great to be back in person before the commission. I want to thank Canoa for his presentation and work on this project. And you are correct, there were two very old shallow wells on the property. I've passed around um, some pictures that were depicted on the survey map. And these have been abandoned, uh, they are not hooked up to, which they would. There was an old easement that served a property to the south. However, that is not um, been used. And also, under the local coastal plan, the PAD regulations, you really aren't supposed to be sharing wells with adjacent properties, but I think it was had been done in the past. This is a legal one, one parcel that had the three APNs. It is a legal parcel created by a subdivision map. You know, prior, you know, to the coastal act. So it's a little over six and a half acres. And um, the purpose of this project is is to demonstrate whether we would have wells that could meet today's standards for safe yield and, and a quantity that could for safe yield and and a quantity that could support a single family residence. They had done a comprehensive environmental evaluation with W R A to see, you know, if there were areas that are sensitive. And yes, the majority of the site is sensitive. There the southeast corner is available without any conflicts and can accommodate the appropriate buffer areas in which it's been depicted on the site plan. The area is going to be staked or just where the travel way would be for the well drilling rigs and where they can work around the wells only. That is where the the work will occur on the site, very limited. Also, the biologist comes to the site when the well driller is there, they conduct pre surveys to ensure that everything is, you know, clear on the site and also they give an education to the workers to what to look for and, you know, and and just to really verify that everything, all the conditions that are in Canoa's comprehensive report are adhered to. And but the actual amount of work is very brief. It only takes a couple of days to do the setup and drill a well and if they would only drill additional well in the approved location if they don't find adequate water. And so, you know, it's really just to go with the best choice at the time that on this approved map, environmental health will also be present during the drilling to make sure that the sanitary seal and everything is done according to today's standards. And the we we were very grateful for the environmental, the agriculture advisory committee's recommendation for approval of this project, also with staff. We've reviewed the conditions, we accept them. So I'm really here to answer any more questions and thank you for your consideration.
Questions? So this the existing well is closed?
Yes, well, you can see there's no equipment attached to it. It's actually sealed off with the plate, the metal plates and the bolts. And so there's no connection to, and you need to have a way with a pump and then have to to actually pull water up out of that. So they're they're non operational and environmental health. There's been some discussion to see because it's a shallow well, that's not appropriate for domestic water use it because it can be more surface contamination. They might retain one for whatever potential ag use if 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 the project goes forward, but at this point we're just waiting to see if there's adequate water to do a future residential project that would require a full review and be back before the county with a P A D and coastal development permit.
Thank you. Commissioner Ketchum, you had a question? No, your question is answered?
Oh, yeah.
So are there any plans? Are there any plans of doing any agriculture in addition to residents?
Not until, well, understanding, once we understand what the water resources are and then they can determine working with the biologist too, because we have some, you know, some things to consider there. It had been farmed many decades ago, but you know that, you know, it's a matter of then working with, you know, in determining what the site carrying capacity is and what kind of agriculture can take place, but you know, that the agriculture advisory committee really didn't spend any time on that issue just because you know that there are some of these other resources on the site.
Thank you. Thank you, Ms. Burke.
You're welcome.
So good. This time we'll have any public speakers?
We do not have any hands raised at this time?
Over Zoom? Anybody in the chamber?
Not have any?
No. Okay. So in that case, we'll close the public hearing. Commissioners have any comments, deliberations? Commissioner Hanson? No.
That's good to me.
Looks good. Do I have a motion?
Ready for a motion?
I think, yeah, we're ready for a motion, I think so.
Let's see. Sorry, I moved to adopt the mitigated declaration and approve the coastal development permit, planned agricultural district permit and architectural review permit. County file number P L N two zero two zero two one one by adopting required findings and conditions of approval and attachment aid.
Seven.
George.
Commissioner Hanson?
Hi.
Commissioner Ketchum? Hi. Commissioner Serona Quan?
Hi.
Commissioner Ramirez?
Hi.
Chair Gupta? Hi, motion passes. Congratulations. Okay, so we move on to item five. Could you read that in Mercedes?
Item number five, the owner applicant is Casey Corsa. File number P L N two zero two zero dash zero zero four one eight. Location five zero four Lake Midway Emerald Hills.
Good morning, planning commissioner, staff and members of public. My name is Erica Adams. I'm presenting P L N twenty twenty dash zero zero four one eight. This is an application for a major remodel to an existing residence at five oh four Liquid Way. The applicant and owner is Casey Corsa. All right, we just went over the project description. As previously described, it's a major remodel. It's second story addition. They're going to relocate the garage and adapt above an accessory dwelling unit. This addition to an existing nonconforming residence. The permits that are required are design review permit, that review occurred by the Everland Hills Designer Officer and a nonconforming use permit. And the aspects of the project that are required to be considered under the nonconforming use permit are the existing side yards of three point nine four feet and five point eleven feet, where a minimum of seven point five feet is required. Those combined is a nine foot combined side side yard setback where twenty feet is required and there is an existing fifteen foot front setback for the garage, which is actually conforming, but the garage and the living space are switching. And so that would be nonconforming, that forbidden space would be in the exact same place where garages. And then twenty nine percent lot coverage where twenty five percent is. That was, as just mentioned, the project is in the unincorporated area of the middle hills. It is a nonconforming parcel and surrounded by it are conforming and nonconforming parcels. This is the existing house. This is the rear of the proposed development. These are the existing floor plans. This proposed floor plans. The addition is to the rear and none of the side setbacks are changing and the fact that it's not changing. I laid out the existing. These are existing front and rear. And existing sides. I mean, those front and rear. And so and this photo, you can see the garage bridge that is now required. That's part of the lot coverage. And then the additional lot coverage is also above the A U. So the A U can exist without the use permit. It's just the deck on top, since that serves the main house that is counted towards lot coverage. So the footprint wouldn't change, but the lot coverage numbers aren't changing because serving the main house. The project was heard by the design review officer twice and was determined to meet the design standards. These are standards, the main ones would be colors, materials, roof slope. And that the façades are programmatic portion. The, I should say, non of use permit, but the proposed development has to be the non doesn't meet the R H district in these areas. And that's what the nonconforming use permit is for. So the nonconforming use permit has five findings that need to be made to to support the approval of the use permit. The first one, that the proposed development is proportional to the size of the development process. And so in this case, all the setbacks that are nonconforming are existing. This house was built during a timeframe when the setbacks for the district were five feet. So the setbacks are close to what was being required. I'm sure surveys weren't required at the time. And the the building footprint is not being modified. And as I indicated, the the nonconforming setback that is occurring in the front is due to the switching of the location of the living space and not the moving of the structure. Lot coverage that's being sought is mainly attributed to the driveway bridge and the deck above the A U. It's four percent above what is allowed. As you probably saw, the correspondence back and forth about the applicant seeking to acquire the additional land. And one of the neighbors feeling like that was not closed with them. I explained that, you know, I would have communicated to me that the efforts were made to acquire the land, but even if I no one was really interested in the land and the and the end of the whole exchange, but there was no opportunity to acquire land from any of the surrounding properties that would resolve the need for a use permit. You would be looking at, but you'd either create nonconformity on adjacent properties or an expensive lot line adjustment for not any significant change in the need for the use permit because the existing structure is just not performing. The project is developed as nearly as possible, forms with the zoning regs. As I stated, the parcel is substandard in size. The frontage is only forty one feet. We're wired side yards setbacks twenty feet, so that is a difficulty in meeting that standard. The setbacks are existing and the coverage again is is in part due to the slope. And the need for the bridge and not an increase of bulk of structure, considering that the A U is not under review. The establishment and maintenance of the proposed use will not be detrimental to the community. None of the reviewing agencies raise concerns about the project. It's not, but there are no postal resources. And that would be impacted and the design was determined to be comparable to surrounding residences. And lastly, that the use permit approval does not constitute the granting of special privileges. The as I indicated, the the structure itself is not conforming and and was legal not conforming. The, there's not an exacerbation of the setback issues and through a lesser application, the home improvement exception, the scope of this is it's approximate, it's a little over the two hundred and fifty square feet, but it's not much more and many parcels in Everland Hills that are substandard in size avail themselves of the use permit to allow them to have development that's more satisfactory to them. And that's going to recommend that the planning commission approve the sign of the permit, not before we use permit. Others are great, sorry. And for this planning case number P L N twenty twenty four eighteen, but it's on the staff report, conditions of approval. And if you have any questions, I'll take them out.
Thank you, Erica. Questions for Erica? Commissioner Ketchum?
Hi, I had a fair amount of difficulty trying to figure out what was proposed. The the project description includes an addition of a deck above an attached A D U. But the plans show a detached A D U in the backyard. Should we do each question or should I run through the questions?
Because maybe you can go. Well, I can answer the 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 applicant is considering an A D U. It's not another A D U, but it's not under consideration at this point. So that might be, I think that might be one of the landscape plans that has that sort of action, but.
Actually, the landscape plan has landscaping in the back, but the site plan for the project has an A D U there. So I assume that the landscape plan is now out of date. But it's this.
Now, the the extra, the second A D U is not being considered. They're they're not moving forward with that at the start.
So there's two A D Us proposed.
This, no, the the second eighty year would require an S B nine application, which is not being done right now. Originally, they were going to do it S B nine.
Well, I'm left with the the fact that the project description speaks of a attached A D U.
It is an A.
And yet, and the plan, I see, I see this clearly detached A D U. So I don't know where this attached one is.
Okay, I can show you where the attached A D U. Well, it's on the.
So was it a J A D U or?
No, it's an A D U. It's so it's it's in the back on the lower floor, see.
The one on the right or the left?
I I can't see with my glasses. I think it's on the left. It's attached and the deck is above. So on the back end of the house, the deck is on top of the A D U.
So the rendering that we saw, that would include that that deck there is over an A D U. Okay, I was unaware of that. Okay. Thank you. So then the this project description has a second story addition. Now, is this this is not making the house taller, is it? They're just switching the floors?
It's switching the floors and I should add that there's a there's unpermitted construction that was associated with the original house. And so part of the addition is legalizing work that's been done. That's not, I I think in your set, you have like permitted, unpermitted. And so there's unpermitted. I was trying to not get into that because it becomes even more confusing, but the permit will address all the unpermitted building that's happened on the site.
Yeah, that's fine. I just need to know what's proposed for the finished thing.
Sure.
And so the A D U definitely is within the main building and the the one that's shown detached in the back is just not, got no deck on top or anything. And so presumably the landscaping would go there. Okay. So moving on. So the so the existing two car garage. Okay, there's a table. Let's go to parking. The table there, we're showing conformities and whatever. It shows for parking the the zoning requirement has two covered and two uncovered. And the existing, it says zero covered and two uncovered. Now, where do you get zero covered? Because is this this interim unpermitted thing going on that I'm not aware of? Because I look at the plans and I see and the picture, I see a garage, a covered garage there, and they're proposing a covered garage. So.
Right, it's two to.
So how does this show, it shows existing, there is zero covered parking existing, don't understand.
It's an error.
Okay, so then the proposed, and then the proposed column there, it says two covered with. Proposed detached garage. But there is no detached garage and then it's um. And then the two uncovered spaces are shown on the street and that.
In the driveway, the two uncovered, so there are two covered parking spaces. My, um, okay, so it's two and two, there's, the parking is not changing, it's two and two and two uncovered and two and two. Um, I mean, two covered, two uncovered, two uncovered, two covered, it's the same.
All right, so but the final version where it's showing, you know, with the bridge and two covered. It shows two parking spaces, which are the uncovered ones, and they're out along the street.
They can also be achieved, they can be either place. So they can be in the driveway and in Emerald Hills, they're allowed to be in the driveway. Because there's enough space on the bridge to actually park the cars there.
No, they're not shown on the bridge or the driver, they're shown parallel along the street.
They can also be in the right of way.
Well, it's not even on site, I don't understand, I never heard of that.
In Emerald Hills, they're allowed to be in the right of way, which is the street. Or they can be um, in the, on the, on the bridge.
Okay, um. So let me make sure now how this is coming to go. So the location of the residence is not being modified. The addition to the residence is located at the rear where the A D U will be and um. And the addition would be placed above the proposed A D U.
Right.
We're just talking about floors, but it's all there in the rear of the house, okay, I think I've got it now. Um. Thank you very much.
No problem.
That's all for me.
Sorry about the staff report. But then chung. Anya?
So these unpermitted uh, work was done when these uh, violations were issued.
Correct.
Right, right as I, right around that time. Um, okay. And tho- those were the draw, some of the drawings that Commissioner Ketchum was referring to, right?
I think she was trying to understand the scope of the addition, the additional space.
Yeah, that that was a little confusing one there. One was um, yeah, yeah, I think, I think I understand there. And and um, you already explained. Okay, so I I don't have any further questions at this time. Uh, so is the.
And the.
Is the applicant is.
Designer are online.
Okay, okay, so.
Did you have any questions for the owner of the designer?
Uh, no, if they have any, anything to present, they are.
Their hands are not raised.
May I suggest Chair Gupta that we take a public comment at this point?
Okay. Any, any speakers of Mercedes?
We do not have any speakers over Zoom. Um, we do have one speaker in chambers.
In chambers, okay.
And that is Mohammed Mos- Mostafa?
Okay, okay, please. Please, yes, come to the. Mohammed, microphone and state your name, please.
Uh, can you? My name is Mohammed Mustafa. And I reside in five zero eight Lake Mead, the west of this property. I looked at the description, this is actually. Addition of fifteen hundred square feet. The A D U is in the back, second level. So I'm very concerned because my house entrance is on the site between me and the property. That we're talking about. So any increases in levels? And already there's violations on the setbacks. So there will be not enough room. There would be blockage and concern about that blocking, not just the views, but having. Too much bigger area, there's so much, yeah, unconfirming stuff here. Lot size, uh, discrepancies, design standards. There's a lot of work here, so I'm very concerned about privacy. The blocking, the unconfirmities that would be built. This is the house. It's currently, I think, middle of this is two thousand one hundred thirty, thirty-seven square feet. Almost one thousand second story addition. And eight, eight hundred square feet on the A D U is in the back, so. I'm concerned. And if somebody does a design review, people need to consider direct neighboring things and the impact. On these homes, because I'm very much concerned about my property value. I lived there for twenty-five years, so it would be blocking the whole east side. And again, the entrance of my house is on the side. So this will be just that, a big block on the right-hand side that's going deeper on the property. That's my, my really concern, so I'm very concerned. About this designer, the unconfirmities that she just shared. I missed the first meeting because I was busy and working, I'm a professional and I was actually traveling. So when I read some of these things in the mail, I was very concerned. And I talked to Mister Project, he shared with me some of the plans and I told them. I'm very concerned about the blockage, the privacies, because it goes in. And since this is, my house is on the side, you're just looking inside my house directly through. So. There's something, no, I I I work in the technology area. Yeah, in architecture and stuff like that for technology, so not enough due diligence is done here. No consideration for neighborhoods. Think Erica is talking about design and stuff. I'm I'm not in sync with this. Two blockings. And I didn't get a chance to look at the drawings and stuff like that, but. He showed me some of the drawings and I told him my concern and it seems like nothing happened. Two years ago, he showed me. So I, this would affect my property value too. It's not the new house property value, it's the neighboring property values too, have to be considered. So I don't know when people go there to check and do design reviews, do they see the impact on the neighbors? Right, and this violation of setbacks, you build on the, on the top of the way of violations. You you need to look at what impact this would have on other people too. But this is my two cents, I, I have twenty-five seconds. So I'm, I'm appreciative of being here to share my point of view. And I actually very supportive of of Mister Corset. Modernizing and building the house, but I don't want this to affect my property value. Uh. Thank you very much.
Thank you, Mister Mustafa. That is the end of public comment? Okay. So in that case, uh, we'll close the uh, public hearing. Any comment?
Um, I want to recognize Mister Mustafa, thank you for coming today and uh, expressing your perspective. Um, my understanding, and I'll ask Erica to correct me if I'm wrong, is that um, the non-conformings are existing. And that the new development will not um, increase those non-conformities. The addition will actually be conforming with required setbacks and so forth. So um, the project, you know, the new development being proposed. Is consistent with the parameters established by um, the Emerald Lake Hills Design Review District. Am I correct about that, Erica?
That is.
So um, it's it's not unusual for this commission to see projects like this. Where we have an existing residence that was built in accordance with the rules at the time. But no longer confirms to current regulations. And it's been a consistent practice of this commission to allow um, these non-conforming. Uh, residences to be improved, provided that the new improvements are in compliance with the rules in uh, place at the time. Uh, if you could put it on the mic, please, otherwise the public can't hear.
I just wanted to add that the um, addition on the side adjacent to Mister Mustafa's house. Has the twelve and a half foot setback, which is, you know, it's the um, larger of the two setbacks. The other side has the seven and a half foot. That's all I want to add.
Thank you.
So I have no further comments at this point.
Thank you, Steve. Okay, so we are.
Looking for comments?
Comments, deliberations?
Yes, first I'd like to address the speaker who was today. You also sent a letter and I'll let you know that I did read it. Um, I've been doing planning for over twenty years, both for the city of San Antonio as the county. And one of your big concerns is the value to your house. Um, in my experience, I have not seen anybody's. House design, particularly a very well-designed house, as I see this one. Impact negatively to your value of your house. Uh, usually what I have seen in watching these things, because they're coming from me, I'm very conscious. They've actually increased the value to your house and you live in a very desirable neighborhood. And short of putting a nuclear reactor next to you, I don't know if anything is going to impact your value of your house. So, uh, and my expectation would probably be a positive impact. Uh, your concerns about privacy and. And massiveness of the house and stuff like that, I understand what you're saying. Um, but I'm finding everything inconformity for what is allowed. I also heard that you, you saw things of in violation. I, the key word here is what the. What was put in place originally was legally. And even though the standards have changed, so it just makes it legally but non-conforming. It's not in a violation if to continue on with it, so. Uh, I just want to let you know that I did hear what you say and I understand what you're doing and. Uh, I don't know if my words give you any comfort about the value of your house. But I believe it, it will not negatively impact you. Um, given that, I am in favor of approving this.
Um, I I'm just going to echo your uh, comments on this. Um, we've had a number of projects that come from that area because it's always very challenging. Due to the topography, the size of the lots, like this one, it's, you know, an undersized lot for the area. Um, it is, um, they're building a little bit bigger, but based again. When the size of the lot, I don't think it's overwhelming, um, you know, or making it too bulky, um. So with that, I will support um, the project. And.
Sit down with me.
I have no additional comments.
Then on that, I I can make the uh, the motion if you don't mind. Um, I move that the planning commission approve uh, the design review permit. A non confirming use permit uh, for the county uh, pile number. Uh, P P L N twenty twenty dash zero, zero, four, one, eight. Based on and subject to the required findings and conditions of approval listed in attachment A.
And I will second that.
Rode call, please. Commissioner Hanson?
I.
Commissioner Ketchum?
I.
Commissioner Serrano Quan?
I.
Commissioner Ramirez?
I.
Chair Bootham? I, motion passes. So we move on to item six, correspondence and other matters?
Yes, thank you, Chair. Um, I have no correspondence to report other than the correspondence that was uh, provided to you regarding items three and items five to today. Uh, moving on to the next meeting, item seven, um. The next meeting will be on September thirteenth. Uh, the one item that we do have on the item uh, on the agenda, which uh, would fit within the realm of a study session. Is the introduction of the draft environmental impact report for the Cypress Point Affordable Housing Project in Moss Beach.
And I will be gone for that one.
Understood, we will miss you. Um, if it's all right with the Chair, I'll move on to the Director's Report.
Please do.
Um, I I just have a brief report to you today. I wanted to alert you to um, the upcoming Board of Supervisor. Uh, hearing on September twenty-sixth, where the Board of Supervisors will be considering. The North Fair Oaks rezoning and general plan amendments that this commission recommended approval of. Uh, they will also be considering updates to the fire code section of the building code. As submitted by various fire districts within the county. And that concludes my report.
Okay. So so between now and then the Board of Supervisors is not meeting?
They are meeting, it's just we don't have any planning and building items on the board agenda until uh, September twenty-sixth.
Um, and there's no update on housing element?
Um, so the update on the housing element is that um, we continue to refine our um. Proposed update, particularly the sites inventory in response to the comments from uh, uh, the state H C D. Uh, one of the challenges we've encountered is in um, obtaining the assistance we need. From a consulting services to um, complete that work. Um, we we, uh, there were some unforeseen events that caused a little bit of a delay. So um, we've, we're in the process of securing that contract. And we anticipate that we'll be bringing a revised proposal to the board sometime in October. But um, we need to complete that work before I have a um, specific date to provide to you.
Thank you, Steve.
You're welcome.
Any questions for Steve?
Any date yet for plan testing?
Um, no specific date yet, but I uh, can say that we are actively working on preparing. Um no specific date yet, but I uh can say that we are actively working on preparing. Uh materials to distribute to the public, um we have a little bit more work to do before I can provide a specific date on that. Uh but I foresee that to be um within the horizon of the next month or two. You're welcome.
Have nothing else, meeting is adjourned.
Thank you.